We're going to have imocation from Councilwoman Comer, pledge of allegiance from Councilman Parker. So if you would stand, please.
Everyone, I'm out of there, guys. You're having a call, thank you for bringing us here this evening. Just take a minute to thank you for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for all the voters who were going out this evening to help us find someone to sit up here with us and make all the decisions we have to make for our city. I ask that you'll be with all those candidates this evening as we know how tough it is on an election night. Father, we ask that you'll help us through this meeting and help us make the decisions that are easy and ones that are tough. I ask that you'll bless all of those who work for the city every day and every night and that you'll keep your hand on our first responders and all of those who work so hard every day. I ask these things in your holy name.
Amen.
Please join in the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right, does any member of the council or the administration have an amendment to the agenda?
Could we pull 7B off of the consent agenda just because I just would like to understand what Phase Two includes.
24.
And we, well, go ahead.
Okay, where do you want to make that, 13? You'll put that under Mayor Council items and put it under?
Yeah, it'll be 13B1.
13B1. All right. 7B will be 13B1. All right, anybody else? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as amended.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Is there anyone here to address the council? Raise your hand. Anybody here to address, you've signed up, okay? Anybody else? Okay. All right, community recognition, we're going to start with that this evening. Any members of the youth council? Mayor's youth council? Nobody is here with the mayor's youth council. I love my youth council, they're just great. So now we're going to business spotlight. This week's business spotlight is another great downtown merchant who supports this community like the other businesses. We feature each meeting. This nice boutique attracts customers from all over the coast. So let's take a look at these screens here on a video about them.
Tonight's business spotlight is a boho chic boutique for women. Bridget Blue is located in the heart of downtown Pascagoula on Delmas Avenue. Come inside and you'll immediately find yourself in an emporium of gift items, jewelry, clothing, and even a candy buffet. Stop by today and let owner Robin Rankin show you a little bit of everything that Bridget Blue has to offer. Her business has been thriving for more than five years in downtown Pascagoula. Like so many other great businesses in our Main Street footprint, Bridget Blue is proof that nothing can compete with quality products and merchandise combined with a small business owner's passion for customer service. As always, we encourage everyone to shop local and support our hometown businesses.
All right, thank you. Just want to take a minute to say how much we appreciate those guys doing business here in our great city and responding to the moment, doing a video and all of them with the recognition of the business spotlight. So what I want to say is we have moments with the mayor which is some of the ways that we were able to get some of these businesses to reach out to us and do spotlights. And one of the things that we haven't seen a lot of is the businesses reaching out. So if you know somebody or know a business, ask them to contact us at that email address so that we can get more of this. We do this solely as an opportunity to promote our own local businesses. And it's a great feature because it goes out on that Facebook thing and in our TV. It's the devil, I just tell you. And then at least we get the word out and all. And so what we want to do is we want to use this opportunity to support our own people who are investing here in the city. And so thank you for watching this tonight. We appreciate you reaching out. It's really great to hear from you guys. I said that tonight when she went and signed up. It's just, I wish we had a lot of this. So moment with the mayor, I think that email is askthemayor@cityofpascagoula.com. Askthemayor@cityofpascagoula.com. Send all your emails there. If you have a business that you want to recommend, just recommend it. We'll go out and we'll hook up with them and we'll try to get a video made for them and promote them from here. Anyway, thanks again and please shop local. All right, well, let's see. Mr. Scruggs, now we're going to the public hearing. So would you please come up and talk about the minutes of the planning board?
I guess the first thing would be to accept the minutes from the planning board as provided to you from the meeting last Wednesday night.
Mr. Mayor, I move we accept the minutes for the March 13, 2019, planning board meeting.
All right, is there any further discussion on this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Last Wednesday night, the planning board had a couple of applications before them. One was the application to rezon a couple of parcels by David Boland for the Pavco properties up on Pascagoula Street and just east of Fair Street and Market Street. These properties, as you can tell from the map, are located south of the actual Pavco site. They have had a variety of uses in those businesses over the past 50 years and they are not directly a Pavco product or Pavco building. In fact, the one that's proposed for CC was actually just purchased a few years ago, but historically it has been a commercial property. At any rate, the problem that we have with properties that are incorrectly zoned, like these two parcels, is that it does cause some long-term issues and stability issues for the property owner, meaning that he's got a large warehouse-type structure that only can be used as warehousing or some kind of a commercial use and it could not be used as a single-family residential. So in the event the building became vacant and could not be occupied and lost its non-conforming status, then it would be a vacant and blocky building that would either have to come down, would basically have to come down or sit there with the vacant. So Mr. Boland and I had some conversations and the idea was that it may be in his long-term best interest of the property to actually have it resolved. This is in fact outlining the Pavco site. The business has been in operation by the Boland family since 1972 and the building has actually been in, the building on the north has actually been there since 1947. So it does have a long history of the property. Now, when David did submit this application, he had tried to submit the triangular piece that is between Market and Fair Street on the south side of Pascagoula. He had recently acquired that property from the state, the seven Mississippi tax sales. Unfortunately, he did not have a legal description, so I could not process the application and that parcel is not included. The reason I bring this up is that was a big topic of conversation at the planning board meeting last week. Some neighbors really did not want that piece included and I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that that property is not included. It's just the properties that are located to the immediate east of Fair Street and they're south of Pascagoula Street. Here are some images of the property. The white building to the left is the warehouse that is proposed to be zoned industrial. It pretty much from right here you can tell takes up a large portion of the property that will be zoned industrial, meaning that there's not a lot of room for expansion or anything else. The footprint of the building is probably set to about the place that it will be. But that's the building that's on the left at the bottom.
And is that the purple section of that map?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. These aren't really, the one on both ends, the white one is the building and the one of this, the far right is actually a picture of the inside of the building. There's some boat repair, manufacturing or storage going on there right now.
Mr. Scruggs?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'm looking at here, the warehouse here to your far left, then we go, that house right in the middle and between that blue house, isn't that a driveway between you and that?
Yes, sir. I've got a better image that will show you the driveway here in just a moment because that was also a conversation we had last Wednesday night and I think it's worth paying attention to. At present, the, this property is zoned, as stated previously, single-family residential. And as you can tell, this is really not a single-family residential use. Now, I do believe the building with the pickup truck in front of it has served as a residential building in the past primarily for an overseer or the owner of the property as a lip work type facility. This is, I think what we were talking about just a moment ago, Mr. Jones, the arrow above the tree actually points to the driveway that we all talked about last Wednesday night. The driveway that is shown there is actually an easement that provides access to three or four residential properties and the cemetery. It's a very well-used property that Mr. Boland owns, but it would be considered an implied easement, meaning that it's not drawn, it's not platted, but it has been used for a very, very long time by the property owners to the south and they do have the rights to continue with that use. David had toyed with the idea of trying to provide some means of access to allow them to go out to Fair Street, but that, there's a huge oak tree that is in a bad location and it would basically have to be removed to make that happen. So I believe everybody agrees that leaving the easement as it is is probably the best option. But at any rate, there was a lot of discussion last Wednesday night about what to do with the easement, but David has no intention of removing it. In fact, I think he cannot remove it because it is an easement that has been used for years and years and the owners have that right. And if they did not have that opportunity, the properties would be landlocked and of course that's, you can't do that. There were some concerns mentioned by the property owners to the south that, you know, these are commercial structures and some of the uses that may go there are objectionable. Well, those uses, some of the issues they brought up with the door, the bay doors on the rear being open and garbage being in the rear, those are all uses that are pretty much allowed to continue as a non-conforming use. So, you know, some of the issues they have are really not going to go away whether or not this property is resolved or not. There'll be, these properties can exist and continue to operate as industrial or as commercial as long as they don't cease to operate for a period of six months or more. The, my recommendation to the planning board was to approve both parcels based on the mistaken zoning from the SFR 6 to the light industrial LI for the purple property as you mentioned to Ms. Comer. And then for the western parcels to be resolved from SFR 6 to CC on that same premise. Both of these based on the fact that they have been used in a commercial nature for more than 50 years or industrial for more than 50 years and have been allowed to operate in that capacity during this whole time regardless of the SFR 6 zone. So it does do a lot to clean that property up as far as the zoning designation. The planning board voted to approve the rezoning based on my recommendation and stipulated that access to parcels located to the south and such properties must be allowed to continue to use those properties for access. So, you know, that is there and that was, that's in a nutshell, my recommendation and report and what went on with the meeting. I do believe there are a few citizens present that may want to speak on this matter. I don't know that Mr. Boland is present.
Can you go back to the map with the purple and the orange and show us which, which one are you saying? Okay, that's what I want to see right there. So same side of the street, the orange piece you want to be community commercial and the purple piece you want to be light industrial. And I have, I have about five questions.
Donovan, let me ask you real quick. The area that's proposed to be, the purple area that would be light industrial, what is the age of the warehouse that's there?
I do not know the age of the warehouse. You know, from the images, it definitely is not new, but it does look to be pretty well-built and appears to have the, some durability to it.
I ask because of my own recollection, I remember as a youngster that there was a structure there. I don't remember the specifics of it and I do remember it was associated with Pavco, but I remember it as something different than that building. And so I, do you, am I understanding correctly though that that particular piece, according to the information you have, has been in continuous use for whether it's warehousing, inventory, whatever purposes associated with the veneer plant for some period of time?
I do, yes. I mean, my knowledge, it has been operating as a, some commercial, some commercial for a period of time. I did not research to find out if there were any breaks in that use. I went with the assumption that it's operating now and it has been operating for quite some time.
I guess what I'm saying is, is that when you say it's a non-conforming use, are you saying that it is, it has been non-conforming going back 15 years or it has been non-conforming going back to the inception of, I guess, our zoning map, however far back that goes, the 70s or 60s? How long has it been non-conforming to the best of your knowledge?
I believe codes were adopted in the 1960s and revised in the 70s and from the maps I've seen, it has always been zoned, single-family residential. So with that, it's been basically considered a non-conforming use since the time that we had zoning here in Pascagoula.
Okay. The other questions I had was, you mentioned the property and I'm going to call them out unfortunately by parcel number because that's the only way I can describe it, but the parcel that has the truck in front of it, that's the one-story white, I think it's a cinder block house, I went and looked at it on Saturday and it's parcel number, I think it's four, ends in 409. You said that was used as a residence. How long has that been used as a residence?
When I say a residence, I think the previous owner, owner of the property used to actually live there and then operate his business next door. It was a, more of a live-work type facility, not a residence that would stand alone by the, by a separate owner.
How is it currently used now?
I believe it, I really don't know how it's used right now.
And the parcels that are currently vacant, and those are parcel numbers 408 and 405 that are the closest to Fair Street. There is no commercial activity on either one of those parcels as we speak. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Has the owner given you any indication that some commercial activity or some commercial purpose is planned in the future involving those two parcels?
Not specifically. No. He basically has, the building, as you can tell from, you know, the image here below, if those are a commercial in nature and does require parking, you know, using the additional property would be advantageous to accommodate that parking. Adding a new building on site, whether it be on the industrial area or the CC area, is going to be somewhat difficult due to the property to the east of the building being primarily the access points, you know, the easement that we spoke of, and then property to the west of that site. If you put another building down there, then you would almost have zero parking available. So it would be very hard to add additional structures and still accommodate off-street parking.
I'm going to ask my questions now and I may repeat Stephen's questions, but sometimes I have a hard time figuring out what question he asked.
You ought to try answering them.
So I'm going to ask mine in kindergarten language.
Go ahead.
The two parcels that he asked about, do they belong to Mr. Boland? Or do they belong, they do?
Yes.
Okay. So we don't know what his plans are for the, for the lots, for the commercial activity.
That's correct.
Okay. So we don't know if he's going to put in 24-hour-a-day industrial facility with big lights and lots of noise and all that kind of thing? Because that's what commercial activity and that's what that is. Right? Am I right?
Not exactly.
Well, man, it could be.
Not exactly. I mean, the...
Well, not exactly, but it could be. It could have big lights and it could have lots of noise and it could be 24 hours a day working or it could be 18 hours or 12 hours or what, it could be, that's commercial activity.
Well, I mean, you are, there's industrial activity and then there's commercial activity. And the industrial activity could occur on the lot to the east. The industrial activity could not occur on the area to the west. So, I mean, there would be some separation there. The, the, there are things that could go there, but new structures, whether they be, you know, by right or not, would be evaluated in the sense that, you know, are they compatible and would they cause, you know, conflicts with the neighbors? So if they had lights that were streaming or blasting or that were be considered obnoxious, then that would not be allowed to intrude into the residential area.
Okay. So, and we don't know that he's not planning to turn around and sell it to somebody else.
No, ma'am.
And so he could do that and they could be having that plan. So what we need to do is take a look at what's the worst thing that could be put there before we make this decision, because we have to consider the neighbors.
Yes. And that, yeah, and that's why when somebody comes in and goes, I want to do a daycare, can I have my CC zoning? And you go, yeah, because the daycare is not obnoxious or bad. And then they decide not to put a daycare, but to put something that's more intense in that CC zoning. Yes, that's why it's not a good idea to ask what you're going to do is to evaluate the CC and see if it is compatible.
Okay. Well, and, you know, the thing that got me when I was looking at that is that it was incorrectly zoned. Well, it was zoned for single-family residents, but then they put this thing there, so maybe they put that thing there and it shouldn't have been there because it was zoned for singly, single-family residents. So maybe that shouldn't have, that structure shouldn't have gone there. Maybe that should have been taken care of and we didn't make a mistake as the city, but they made a mistake.
I believe that some of the structures predate zoning and therefore may have been before we instituted our zoning regulations. So therefore, it's a chicken and egg, which came first, I don't know, but, you know, it was 50 years ago, 60 years ago, it has been, it has been there for quite some time.
Well, and I, I get that.
Definitely no bus made that problem.
I get that. I just hate to, so have these people. So I hate to say that.
So Donovan, would that boat repair business of that sort not fit into the CC conforming business?
I didn't hear your question, Mr. Tipton. Did you ask that?
I asked him whether the boat repair business that seems to be working there now, would it not fit in to be a conforming business under CC instead of light industrial?
Yes, boat and marine repair construction is allowed in the CC zone.
So is there a reason why we're looking at it to be light industrial and just not CC-ing all of it? So...
Well, we dealt with the request as provided, you know, and that's what he asked for. The, of course, going down to a CC zoning would be much more agreeable to the neighborhood. The problem, a problem with that is that the, while there is a boat storage facility, a boat repair facility there now, in the event it wanted to shift and go toward some of the products that are being manufactured at Pavco and are used to warehouse at store or even manufacture, then it could not, that could not occur in the CC zone. So it gives him the biggest line of options, but at the same time, light industrial is more objectionable to the neighborhood than the CC.
Appears to me we're just cleaning up some zoning irregularities that should have been fixed a long time ago, in my opinion.
We've got properties all over town and there, as some of these property owners that have owned these properties for 40 or 50 years and never had an issue with them and then they decide to sell it, they are beginning to see that, you know, it's not easy to sell property that may be industrial or commercial in nature and located in a single-family residential zone. So there are properties like this in town that do need to be addressed, either as, sir, we're sorry, your family's business is incorrectly zoned, but it has to be a home now, or we try to accommodate them with some kind of rezoning. And I'll admit, you know, this is not a, I don't think I've hardly ever recommended for a zoning from SFR 6 to light industrial. That's a very, very far jump, but in this particular situation, it's not like there are two vacant lots and he's actually, actually trying to expand a zone and put up a new building. You've got existing structures that are basically needing to have a zoning that will allow those buildings to continue to operate, convey and whatever else, you know, with some certainty to the property owner.
But we, we can't think about what he's going to do. We need to think about what the next guy is going to do.
Yeah, but I mean...
Because that's the, that's the catch 22 there.
Who would have to get a permit?
Right.
Establishing the business.
Right. And of course, it may not be a next guy if nobody would buy it because it's incorrectly zoned.
Oh, question, Mr. Scruggs. I'm just, I'm a little bit slow here this afternoon, I'm sleepy. Few moments, a few moments ago, you said that we are not fully aware, we don't know Mr. Boland's intentions for this property. So my question to you, what exactly did the planning board approve then?
They approved, they approved a rezoning from SFR 6 to CC and a rezoning from the SFR 6 to a LI. Single-family residential to community commercial, a commercial zone, and single-family residential to light industrial.
So why don't we know his intentions? He hadn't gotten that for you?
I don't believe he knows his intentions. I mean, he has a commercial building that he would like to do something with, but there's, he can't really expand it. In fact, I mean, if he said I wanted to go out and, and do a brand-new parking lot, I would have to tell him that that's an expansion of a non-conforming use and I cannot permit it. He cannot make improvements to his property, he cannot do additions to his property that are, that are not consistent with the SFR 6's district.
You know, this is Councilman Tipton's word. What's your, I thought it was...
I would, yeah, actually, it's across the streets, man.
You mean one side yours or one side?
You got the industrial side?
So this side yours and the other side Pavco's yours?
Yeah.
Well, you know, let me ask you, I don't, this seems to be just a reoccurring problem for over the... for over the years, which is one of the reasons we have all these empty commercial buildings around, because they're not conforming to this or that. They have to zone and change and things like that. A lot of those businesses have been established in residential neighborhoods because everything's centered around Ingalls and then pulled out, you know, with the old Navy. How do we, how do you, there, there is no way, the way I see it, there's no way to, um, make these buildings conform without disrupting the neighborhood in a commercial use unless we maintain them in a, in a, in a, the, the commercial, not the light industrial, but the, uh, what they've been in non-conforming, like the boat repair. So let's say that hypothetically speaking, we, uh, we approve this, and we bring it up to a light industrial. And what I think maybe happened then is either he's gonna bring some kind of commercial activity in there, or he's gonna sell it. Because I get he can't sell it because nobody wants to buy it caught in this quandary where they've always got to end up in here and everybody's battling this. But if we, if we vote to, uh, bring it to light industrial and, you know, Pavco decides to bring in a machine shop there with lights and working, uh, he sells it over there and they got forklifts moving product and trucks backing in all night on all the residential side. That's, you know, that's a concern for me, simply because I don't think anybody who, who have had their homes there, and I suspect they probably had homes there before these buildings were built. Uh, I don't think, uh, I don't think there's a, a winnable solution unless we keep it out of light industrial and keep it, uh, just to, on the commercial side. Because I think that we've got some pretty smart residents here that have been here that understand that we're an industrial city and that there's, those kind of things happen. But to put in a light, light industry needs to be on industrial road. And, uh, I know you've said that. However, we do have all these buildings in the city that we've got to do something with. So I'mma just, I'mma just say this. I'mma always err on, uh, the side of caution for those residents. So with that, uh, I will yield my time.
I, I will add, uh, that the, uh, CC district does allow a number of, uh, industrial uses, but allows them through a special use permit. Meaning that if somebody wants to, uh, do something that is a little more intense than what's typically allowed in the CC, then they would have to go to the planning board and come to this body for that permission. So, I mean, it, it, it does not prohibit him completely from doing industrial. It just allows, uh, the city to be a little more selective as to what goes in there. So that may be a very good option to, uh, consider the entire, uh, track as CC. That also provides a, a pretty good transitional buffer area between the, uh, light, the, the Pavco side on the north, Pascagoula Street, and then a CC buffer to the residential on south. So, I mean, that's a-
I, I don't see any other way to compromise it. I'm just, I don't think that that can bring these people in a light industrial complex. I can't do it. So, I mean, they have, uh, a working business there and to, and that's why we have the planning commission and the buffer zone between them and us. Because there are a lot of times I don't agree with the planning commission because their job is different than ours. And, uh, at the end of the day, um, the good Reverend Jones represents that area and, and, uh, Mr. Tipton represents that area, and I'm gonna generally lean in favor of the direction that they go in, simply because. But me and Councilwoman Comer represent them too. And so what I want to do is make sure that everybody is happy with what goes on. And sometimes that, that can't happen. But I think a light industry has to be taken off the table. I just think that's what we're gonna do. And I don't, I think everybody here would probably agree with it. And then, uh, moving it over. But I do want to hear from, uh, who, oh, yeah, you want to speak Donovan.
I think we have a spokesperson, Mr. Man, which one?
Now, you for or against?
I'm against it, and I'm directly-
Well, she needs, she needs to come up to the podium.
Yeah. Announce if anyone's here for it.
Well, that's what I said, you for it, against it?
I'm against it.
You're for it first?
Yes.
Who, is anybody here for it? Okay. Now.
You want us to stand if we're against it?
No, I just want him to let me run me. It's, uh, it's, it's-
Can you tell us your name?
Yeah, tell us.
My name's Han, ooh. My name's-
We can hear you now.
My name's Hannah, a lesbian. And sorry, I couldn't be here last week. I had the flu and so did my husband, so neither one of us could attend, but I did send an email. The first thing I'd kind of like to address is the middle picture with this house, and y'all asked him who lives in there? And like, before Jimmy Bardwell, but they own Bardwell or B&amp;B Supplies and all that. That house is being lived in, and has been lived in for a good chunk of time, and it's not the owner living there. She works, and I'm assuming she works at Pavco because she walks across the street and is there majority of the day and then walks back. So-
It's a rental property.
I, I don't know, I don't know all the details. I just know that it's not Mr. Bowlin living there. And-
Donovan, did you know that there was somebody living there?
I believe they didn't mention that, um, that he had employees may live there.
She's the plant manager.
For?
At Pavco. It's his plant manager.
And one of the things I noticed when Donovan mentioned that, uh, this used to be associated with the business, that, that residential structure. Since it's a separate parcel, I have to assume that at some point in the past 20, 30 years ago, those properties were divided, so whoever did live in that house could claim a homestead exemption and get the benefit of being a residential structure. And so your, your point about someone living there, when I drove by on Saturday, I, I didn't see any commercial activity there. I saw what looked like residential activity. So, okay.
Yes, sir, and I wish that I could have, I either could have brought in pictures or y'all could have took pictures. But my house is directly behind, if you, that, okay, you see the white house, and then there's the actual storefront in the middle picture, and then there's this big building behind it that's got the bay doors. My house is directly behind there. And if they open those doors and they start, even if it's commercial, and they start using like for, forklifts or anything like that, that's blocking me access from my house. And I cannot, I mean, and this is nice as possible, they block, I mean, the 18-wheelers block this side of Pascagoula Street when they're unloading. And there's other neighbors that's been complaining about that. And then even at this first building, when they, which-
When you say first building, which one are you talking about?
This one right here.
Oh, the warehouse?
I mean, that has nothing to do with me, but when I'm coming out of my driveway, the way that they park just right there, you can't see around. So if you don't have no consideration for this way and this way, then you're not gonna have no consideration for me to get to my house.
Let me ask you this, how many homes back there with you?
There's my house, there's Ms. Johnson's house, there's a duplex. It's an apart, it's apartments, it's got-
Three, three, four?
Mom, do you know how many's in there?
Four.
Four.
Can I ask a question really quick?
Uh-huh.
Is Chief Carlson in here?
Hi, ma'am.
Uh, what kind of problem would this present if there was an emergency, if there were 18-wheelers blocking?
Uh, you know, that, that would absolutely present a problem. We haven't had any issues down there in that neighborhood, so I mean-
That's probably a one-in-a-million shot, but, you know, if I was the one-in-a-million shot that you needed to get to, I'd need you to get to me.
But is that a zoning problem, or is that just being a bad neighbor problem?
I don't know, but it's a problem, sounds like.
It is.
I mean, well, I mean, I'm just, I'm, and I guess I'm throwing it out there. Are we just talking about their bad neighbors? Uh, and, and it needs to be, and whether we deny it tonight, something that has to be addressed with, with that issue.
I would, I mean, if it was anybody, I would be up here fighting it. Because if you saw literally, I don't know how far you went back when you went and looked, but if you saw exactly where my driveway is-
I went as back as the pot, farther back, because the pot holes would allow me to go.
Yes, yes. Okay, well, my house is the brick one that was all the way, like, if you went down the driveway and went to the right. My house is the brick one. It is lined, like, our property line is like where that oak tree is. Not, ours is back a little bit farther than that, but it's right there, like butt-to-butt. And then those doors, like I said, if he wanted to bring like boats back there or anything like that, that's blocking me. That, it's not very wide back there. And I have to get my son to school in the morning, I'm going to college. I mean, we're in and out all day. I, I can't afford to get blocked in. And like she said, and if emergency happens. And then also, there's always kids back there playing. There's, there's kids riding their bikes, my neighbor's has kids. My son, he's autistic, and although I don't let him run freely out there, I mean, he's nonverbal, he don't understand that, hey, there's something coming at me. I can't walk out in front of it, and that's just too close to comfort to me. And like I said, I take care of my kid really good, I keep an eye on him, but accidents do happen. And that, I've lived back there pretty much my whole life. And when we didn't live back there, my grandma and grandpa lived back there, and I was over there all the time. And it's never had traffic like this. I mean, like, what could happen? It's, it's never been like that. And as far, not meaning this as rude either, he knew, only bought it.
Well, well, part of the-
And there's-
Part of the problem, as I see, is, is a legal one. And that is, you're using a driveway that's crossing private property that, I, I agree with Donovan. It would be an easement, a plied easement, or the legal term is an easement by necessity. But right now, all of you have been using it for a long time, but you don't have any real legal rights. It's not defined. It's not, there's no driveway that's been declared by a court to, to be accessible by you. And so, and, and I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying that I don't know if a resolution, if we granted the request or we denied the request, if anything we do tonight is going to change or cause people to start being good neighbors who have been bad neighbors. So I, I just, there's a limit to what we can and can't do tonight when it comes to them blocking your drive, this, this driveway through what is otherwise private property.
But on the other hand, I mean, if there's, if it don't get ruled commercial and apparently it needs, it don't need to be, then there's not gonna be a business, and then I don't have to worry about getting blocked in because they're not using it. And then on top of that, that's gonna bring my house, my property value down. Because nobody, if you ever go to sell that house, nobody is going to want to be that close to a, a business like that. Nobody.
And I just want to be, as I see the maps and as I drove it, the driveway that is used goes through the parcel that has that residence on it. Is, is that correct?
Well-
Have you seen the map that-
I haven't seen, like, I don't know where everybody's property lines and stuff is. I just know it goes right in between.
Okay, all right.
That industrial and the other one.
Do we have anybody else who wants to speak? Because if we don't, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until Mr. Bowlin can be here and answer some questions.
Well, I'd like to speak, ma'am.
Okay.
I've been living that, that, on that street, Market Street down there since 1957.
Sir, could you state your name and address?
Alvin Carter.
Thank you, sir.
Write it down. We have more problems with the trucks and all. We used to didn't have this. But now in the last four, five years, or it's just getting worse and worse. And I could take you to my house right now, and I guarantee you I could sweep up at least a bucket of soda just gets in the house all the time. And he's got a soda thing that he's trying to do something with, but it, it ain't working. It's not working. And I don't like to talk to very much, but I will. And, uh, he, the trucks that comes in, some of those drivers can't drive. He's got a place where he got the bag back down in there to get to the, uh, where they load them up at. Well, they pull all up in my yard, they done towed down two or three things I put up in there. And, uh, I talked to David about it, "Oh, I'm gonna get somebody to fix it." But we ain't never got it fixed. And, uh, so we got a problem with that. A real, real problem. And, uh, like I said, I've been living there since 1957 I built my house. And I've been right there.
You told me about one of the trucks came in and stopped in the middle of the road, and the driver folded up his top-
Yeah.
Right in the middle of the street.
Yeah, they stopped right in the middle of the road, and they won't, they don't want to move. I mean, they just don't want to move. You go out there and, and I mean, you don't get to arguing with somebody out there before you know it, now you get heated. And, uh, things could happen. I don't want nothing to happen. I've been there for a long time. I tried to get along with David. I knew his father when he owned that place. And, but if I'd asked that guy something, when he, or his father, he would do it. He'd get it done right away. And he'd say, "Are you satisfied?" I'd say, "I'm satisfied with that." But like it is now, it's, it's, it's pretty bad. And another thing, this is for the mayor, I've been trying to get a hold of him for a long time. Well, you're probably the only one in the universe that hadn't talked to me and warned me up about something. Well, when they were building, fixing Market Street, they came right up to my street and stopped. They said, "We're gonna put you some sidewalk," never got it. Still hadn't gotten any. What year was that? Ooh, God, way back in the, probably about 50, 59. I wasn't mayor. I know you wasn't. Now, I know you weren't- I wasn't mayor. Yeah, I know you weren't the mayor then. But, uh, but, now that's what they tell them. They said, "We're gonna fit you a sidewalk on your side." We didn't ever did. And still don't have one. I guess when I get ready to go to heaven, they were just-
Hey, that's a nicer one, then.
Well, you see that lady right there behind where you were sitting? She's the one that, that could fix that issue. So I'm gonna ask her right now to kick, put that on the list to fix. Right. Well, it's not that much. We only got two houses down there. I, I know, she, she's gonna put it on the list now. See, you didn't have to call me, all you had to do was just ask me, I could have done that. It's on the list. Look, I called down there before and they told me, "Well, that's not on the list. We don't have that on, on the list." I better forget. It's, it's on the list now. It's on the list now. Oh, 4507. And it's all, it's, it's just two houses, me and Bernard. Oh, we have, yeah. All right, so if anybody else got anything?
Anna Bonham Morton. And it's 4430 Market, which is the wedge we were talking about last week, that little piece there. Alvin lives on Market across Pascagoula.
Yeah.
We were having trouble trying to find out who to talk to about the various zoning and traffic issues and the trucks. Because, um, and actually, the cemetery, no one from St. Peter the Apostle Church was notified that there was a hearing. And the cemetery was quite a big part of the discussion. So I think tabling it, I think there needs to be further, um, discussion and further, um, facts put in to the record, starting with the definitions of light industrial and community commercial. I was not able to find them. And so that was a big question mark. There are, there's a blind, there's a dead man's curb up there where Pascagoula becomes River Road. There have been fatalities-
Yes, there have.
At that, um, intersection. And just with the boats coming across, I was coming off Catalpa on Saturday. There was a lineup of eight cars. Someone comes around River Road at the speed they do sometimes, bam. And so, and then- And furthermore, the trucks parked double-side in front of my mom's house there, where that, you know, just back from the wedge. They park on both sides of the street, 18-wheelers weighing- They park on both sides of the street, eighteen-wheelers, weighing eighty thousand pounds, fully loaded.
Chief, you listening? You getting all that?
Eighty thousand pounds.
We can't? You can't make them not park like that? I mean, there's a school down there.
They get out.
There's, there's a school down there.
On both sides of the street. They have blocked the fire truck from Lake Street Station from getting through the intersection. So I think, you know, in, in community planning, we need to have more information. And we need to have more issues, um, brought up and discussed and make the best plan for the community there. Because it is a legacy community. It goes way back, the people who live there. My dad built that house with his brothers in the nineteen seventies. And my mom is ninety-five, and she still lives there. So what happened?
One time, there was a store that was operated from the side.
That was across the street, the Marial property. My mom's a Marial. This is her house up there by the wedge. So that has been residential property continuous. So, um.
So having, given what you said, uh, Councilwoman Comer has made a recommendation that we table it. Let's, let's have a, let's just have a vote and see if we have a motion that allows that, and then let's go from there.
I'll have a motion.
Alright, and is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Do you want to table it before?
Till the next meeting and if we could, or if we could have Mr. Bowlen here, because he needs to answer some questions.
So table it until April the second.
Now, what I want to do is a couple of things before I end this, okay? One is, chief, exit patrol, um, the area, if you got trucks parking in the middle of the road, blocking the road. Let's, uh, have a conversation with those guys and see if we can't get them to look at an alternative way of parking that doesn't cause that kind of danger. And at least have the shift lieutenants go by there and look at it and make sure that what they're saying is something that would cause danger. And uh, and Donnie, you may want to make sure that, you know, they're not blocking whatever. And then, uh, I would like, uh, for you, Donovan, if you would, to get their information and give them the information they need, uh, as far as, uh, what is identified light, industrial, uh, commercial, that kind of stuff. Is that what you wanted? Okay.
And the church.
Mr. Mayor, we got one. She didn't get a chance to speak. She, you have something you want to say, huh?
Well, I would like to say how much traffic.
Well, anything additional?
Okay.
Okay? Because we can beat it all night, but we've got a motion and we passed it, table it. So we'll get the information that you need and then we'll move on. So, alright? Okay, good.
I, I do want to point out, my department will not be here at that April meeting.
Okay.
Your department won't be here?
Right.
Nobody? Where y'all all going?
Disney World.
A lot about planning. No, we're going to, uh, a floodplain conference up in.
Everybody?
I mean, I can, anybody who would be able to speak to this, uh, be me and Josh and.
Well, it's been that way for forty or fifty years. I'm thinking we have to table it for a full month.
Well, I mean, I agree. I just can't believe everybody's going.
Well, maybe we may table it to the next meeting, so.
Well, I was gonna, my question though, Donovan, is, is, is what happens if we don't do anything? They continue to operate as a, I mean, they're operating as a conforming business on the west side of the road. They would continue to be able to operate as a non, non-conforming business?
Correct. And that, and that was some of the things that the planning board did address, is that the traffic that everybody is talking about now and the buildings that are objectionable that people are talking about now will not go away.
Right.
The uses, you know, as long as, uh, everybody is aware of the six-month timeframe and he keeps lights on and keeps the water on, uh, as far as our able, our ability to check the records, you know, we, we will see it as a continuous use and it will not lose its non-conforming status. So it really is not going to fix anything until David decides to, uh, shut off the water, shut off the power. And we can definitely tell that the building has been vacant for a period of time. And then it becomes a derelict building that we opt or do a twenty-one nineteen eleven and we tear the building down, you know.
If I'm not mistaken, it was operated as a church for a short time. I mean, I'm sure the neighbors may be able to speak to that. But it seemed like they were having a service or something in there at one time.
So let's go on, uh, because we got a mo, we already tabled this. We've got some more stuff to go through. Um. So we're gonna table it to, uh, the second?
Meeting in April?
Second meeting in April. Is that good?
Sixteenth.
Okay. Sixteenth?
The third Tuesday.
Okay, third Tuesday, April sixteen.
Thursday, 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 Thursday.
Alright, uh, Donovan, do you have, you gotta go back up to six, um, six B.
This is the, uh.
Halt side yard variance. We skipped over it. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate it.
The, um, Chris Holt submitted a application for a side yard variance on the north and south side of his, uh, properties at, uh, eight ten Bel Air. Um, this is a diagram of the property. Basically, uh, Mr. Holt's, uh, got a building permit for the lots that he owned. Got under construction and then, uh, during closing, or during some of the finite, louder. During the closing of the construction law, it was determined that there was a lien on the north properties. And, um, it caused problems. Fortunately, the building that he was, that was under construction, uh, was only on one lot. It did not cross the property line. And he wants to have a variance to allow him to construct within two feet of that north property line, uh, which would be a variance of ten feet. Now, that sounds, uh, very, very close, and it is very, very close. But, uh, he will own the north property line. It's just a matter of clearing up that lien. The, um, and he's ma, making progress in doing that. Uh, but if you take a, um, this is the, the property he owns, uh, this is Aris, is the southern lot. And then you can see the lot and a half to the north that he owns as well, where he has a lien on it. This is, this is where the house is today. So I mean, the house is well under construction. And, uh, if the variance is not approved, then he'll either have to wait, uh, you know, thirty, sixty, ninety days until this lien is resolved, or shift the house over a few feet and ask for a lesser variance.
Donovan, I wasn't sure from the application, is he asking for a variance not only on the north side of the property, but on the south side as well?
Yeah, see, the south side is really, we, we, we put that in there for some clarity. Uh, the, my office is able to give administrative variances, uh, for things of less than, uh, twenty percent variances such as that, uh, minor variances. So it's a twelve feet down to ten feet. So that was going to be cleaned up anyway because of the way the, uh, property was sitting. He wa, actually wants to use, uh, an existing si, uh, driveway that is on the, uh, north side of the property. But he owns, Lot Seven is, is what he's building his house on. And he owns Lot Seven and he owns eight and I think half of nine. So, um, he still plans on having eight, and we limited the variance only to Lot Seven. So it, it will not allow him to go to the northernmost extremity of his property and have a variance on that portion.
I, I guess if, if the intent is he's gonna own basically this large piece of property consisting of several lots, why is the house being built so close to a property line on the south that requires a variance? Even if it's an administrative variance?
The, uh, I do believe that the, the, the long-term, uh, plan is to actually split that northern portion off and take what you, what would be Lots Seven, Eight and Nine and do, uh, basically two, um, lot, one and a half lots.
Okay.
Lots, you know, so there'll be.
Buying the lots and then split them back again?
Yeah, the majority of these lots are, uh, like sixty, sixty-one point five feet, I believe, is the, the width of them, which is not very wide. So what the idea is, if it takes a lot and a half, two lots and a half, he'll have, you know, six, seven, right at a hundred feet in width for a, a good-sized house such as that.
So let me ask a question, just because I, I've seen this and I've, especially dealing with many lots and properties that you know I buy. But, uh, you know, it, it seems that I, I, I just, I run into this all the time where, uh, there hadn't, hadn't a survey been done and people build their houses and, uh, kind of like, you know, where you have to have these variances. But if, if, uh, you know, if you build it so close, let's say, um, you build it close to the property line and what happens, doesn't happen, and somebody else is on this line, and they want to put a privacy fence up. And I mean, you literally only have four feet from the wall of his house to the privacy fence. Uh, what happens? What, what is a situation like that? How do you get past that from the city planning? Uh, when you have that kind of incident? Let's say you have, uh, Lot A and, and Lot B. These guys built the house. These people bought the property, uh, if I'm understanding this correctly. And then when these people buy the property, they realize that they've got a privacy fence on theirs and they only have four foot before their wall.
Right. The, um, there's a couple of things that will come into play. First of all, uh, whoever buys that property will be buying a, a vacant piece of property. And they will see an existing structure and they will know what they're getting themselves into when they do that purchase. So it's, would, they would be able to make the adjustments. And with, uh, more than a hundred feet of width, they could simply, you know, build toward the northern portion of their property and make sure they have adequate space on the, uh, south side that would be next, next to this home.
But he is actually buying, he will have three lots?
Yes.
Or he has three lots?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, I understand that.
Yeah.
Alright, so, um, do I have a resolution? Well, is anybody here to speak? For or against? Or against or for?
Mr. Mayor, I make re, I make a motion that we go ahead and grant the variances for the side yard setback requirements at eight ten Bel Air Street.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Alright, uh, the next is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Mr. Mayor, I have a item, have a question about, uh, seven C. Shara. Um, this is the proposal for the auditing services for Columbo Harvey and Associates. And I was reading the lengthy engagement letter and what are their, a, as you understand the engagement letter, I'm not asking for a legal opinion, but what do you understand is their responsibility, if any, towards the bond funds? And avoiding a situation that happened in, you know, previous years where bond funds are being co-mingled with the, the general account? Not saying it will happen, but what, what are their responsibilities in terms of oversight and coming back and making sure that something like that doesn't happen again?
They do check for compliance with bond covenants and other legal requirements. And if it's a material non-compliance, then they would, um, have a finding. And then we would have to respond to the finding and that would be reported.
I assume.
And they ought to report and to y'all.
Okay, and, and I know material is in the eye of the beholder, but I would assuming putting several million dollars of bond funds into a general fund would be deemed a material, you know, oversight. Okay, alright. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Mr. Frederick.
Excuse me. Uh, Mayor and Council, uh, the item that is underneath, uh, eight A, that is, uh, David Rothbart, who y'all approved in agreement for his company court programs to assist, to assist with debt collection last summer. Uh, Mr. Rothbart has been keeping me up, uh, to date on his collection efforts. And based off of those conversations, I recommended that he come and provide an update as well as, uh, a recommendation, uh, to allow him to start collecting past due fines, which he's not. And y'all have that packet that Mr. Rothbart provided to me. Uh, so this is Mr. Rothbart.
Council, ladies. Uh, I, I hope you had a chance to review the, some of the figures that I submitted. Uh, they're very preliminary. Like when I initially approached the board, six months ago, we started this program, uh, speaking with Attorney Frederick and the judge and court clerks, the staff, the police chief, everybody. We knew that it was going to be kind of a challenge the first six months to get the message out to the community that you had to be held responsible for your judicial orders. You know, you, you, there's consequences to being convicted in a court of law. You have to pay your fines. You have to do, you know, your community service. You have to provide all those, you know? So we, we've been doing a total program and one of the financial main issues of what we do, which is, I'd say about thirty percent of totally what we do, because we're also trying to help the citizens obtain jobs. We're helping them try not to repeat offend. We're helping them with other cities where they may have responsibilities. They may have civil responsibilities. So we're kind of guiding them through their life skills, trying to help them so they don't come back to court. But, you know, this is basically, and if you looked at it and, and please ask questions, it's, it's just observations right now. And, and I, and I really, the initial letter dated February sixteenth to Attorney Frederick, um, it's basically the, the first six months and the amounts that we collected, um, which was thirty-eight thousand, five hundred, five fifty-seven. That didn't include February, so if you want to add February. In between six and seven months, we brought in, you know, forty-eight thousand, fifty thousand dollars, which is getting a little better every month. Um, if you, if you look on here, our caseload's rising. Um, our violations, our non-compliance is, is really not too high. It's less than ten percent of the caseload. You know, it's not, it's not too high. We have some people who are continuing to report. They're doing well. Um, but it's not to the point where it needs to be. And one of the, one of the things that I didn't realize, and I don't think Attorney Frederick or the chief realized, or even the judge, Judge Fonderen, when we were getting assessed, assigned cases from the court, the court clerks were notating their court fine balances. But they were also notating their old court fine balances and the definition of currently owed. And old fine balances legally is kind of important. Now, who sets that definition? I'm assuming is the judge. I don't know. Be, each, each city we work in is so totally different. So we were given huge amounts of money to collect that were not specifically that day the person was in court. So they were in court for A, B, and C. We were given that money to collect. But then we were also given huge amounts of money to collect that are in the past. Now, I, I, I kind of gave you an outlook on, on our fees too, just so you can see. Because initially, we were, we had asked the city to contribute towards this program and at the time you weren't able to. So just as a guideline, I, I put in here revenue that we're assessing because we're charging thirty dollars a month. And, um, so say we never collected a dime and you guys had chosen at the time, you were able to pay for the program, especially for the indigent people, there would have been another twenty-eight thousand dollars during that period we would have given you guys. So that's up towards, yeah, my math's not great, but up towards around eighty thousand dollars in six months. It's not bad, you know? Um, and then I supri, I supplied you with a letter dated March eleventh, nineteen, if you can see it. And this is merely a very unique observation that, you know, we've been doing this business for years. Uh, we've been in Mississippi since nineteen ninety-four, essentially. We do the same type of business in multiple counties. Um, and this really stuck out to me, these stats. same type of business in multiple counties. And this really stuck out to me, these stats. And I don't know if you need any clarification on them, but it's basically, you have a population, a very small population that almost owes half of what we're being assigned to collect so far. So I don't know in the big picture, because in the big picture, I don't know. Does the city owe twenty million dollars in court fines? Are they owed thirty million? I don't know. We're not privy to that. But just in the last six months, we've been given one point one seven one million dollars to collect.
Does that include current, what I, what I deem current within the last twelve months and old fines?
Both, yes, sir. Both fines. So if you think about it, we're being assigned one point one seven. In my analysis of those offenders, you've got five hundred and thirty-eight of those people owing less than five thousand dollars individually. They owe six hundred and four thousand dollars of that debt. But then if you look at it, there's another fifty-six people, just fifty-six people, only fifty-six people that almost owe the same amount as your five hundred people. So these are individuals that between the city attorney, maybe the police chief's input, and the judge, to me, they have to make a judicial determination what to do with fifty-six people that owe five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars to your city.
Well, let me, let me, let me tell you who those people are, because I could probably rattle about ten names off the top of my head.
And I did give the city attorney a list.
No, no, no. I mean, these are people, they're, they're, they're the public drunks. They're the people that hang out under the bridge. They're the people that are the loiterers that, that truly are homeless in the sense that they have no job, they have no prospects, they have no money. And if they get five dollars, they find it on the road, they're going to the liquor store and getting them some Mad Dog forty forty.
Yes, sir.
And they're going to, you know, they're, they're going to drink the weekend away and they get picked up, spend the night in jail. And so, you know, that all, it's the same.
I know.
Crew all the time. And, and, and these fines add up. And it got to the point when I was the pro temp judge, it just, it was ridiculous. Hey, you know, Mr. White, how you doing again? Good to see you. You have a good weekend in the jail. So I, I, I'm sympathetic to the fact that it's fifty-six people. But I mean, if we legally could, I'd say for probably eighty percent of that fifty-six, we could write it off.
Exactly.
I mean, you'll never collect it.
Exactly. That's a state auditor, you know, that's more of a state, you know, regulation. But I'm just trying to say that I think we can be pretty successful because almost ten percent of your people are not going to pay their bills. They're not going to pay these fines. We know that. The council member knows that. The judge knows that. They're not. You can't put them in jail because they're poor. It's, it's against the Supreme Court rule. You can't do it. If someone's genuinely poor, you can't punish them by being poor. So I think we're going to get even better, because we've got five hundred and thirty-eight people now to work with that owe six hundred thousand dollars. There's no reason why we can't collect that. I think we can. So this is kind of more of an observation. It's kind of unique. I don't, I don't see that in Hattiesburg and Laurel and some other cities, you know. It's, it's just something that's unique and, and has come up within the last six months. But I think if given time and given with your support and the support of the court staff, which we have, and the judge, he's very good, you know, he, he's, I had a meeting with him and the city attorney. He understands everything that we're doing and we're doing everything that he wants. But I think, give me some more time and I think we're, we're really going to put a dent in that six hundred and four thousand dollars, you know. And then from my knowledge and talking with the city attorney, the, the state auditor has to consider currently owed fines and old fines, two different classifications. You, you can't, you have to treat the bad debt separately than the current debt. So we're proposing, and the city attorney can maybe clarify, we're proposing that we do both. We work on the good, the current old stuff, but then separately, we want to go by what the state auditor says we have to do. And that is to do a collection agency where we do the same service, but do more. But then according to their rules, we're allowed to, we have to invoice the city. You guys get a hundred percent of the money. But we have to invoice the city for what we collect. And the law is up to twenty-five percent for local and up to fifty percent for out of state. So I, right now, because, you know, we have a vested interest in the city. We've been here since Judge Ishi was the judge, you know, and he's sitting on the big bench now. So we have a vested interest. So I propose to the city attorney that we start at fifteen percent, see how it goes. And then another quarter goes by, maybe have another review, raise that up to twenty percent, and then eventually get to the twenty-five, which is what we're, you know, essentially what we're doing. And that's one of the reasons I, I gave you guys my internal P and L. I shared with y'all what we're doing and contributing ourselves to make this happen.
Mr. Rothbard?
Yes, sir.
That was one of the questions I had to make sure I understand correctly.
Yes, sir.
You've collected thirty-eight thousand five fifty-seven, but your fees that you've charged is twenty-seven one oh five, so eleven thousand dollars is going back into city coffers?
Not at all.
Okay.
Not at all, no, sir.
All right, so.
So, so.
Explain that to me and tell me what that means.
Sure. We've collected so far thirty-eight, five, and ten thousand. So that's forty-eight thousand, fifty thousand we've given you. I write a check every other week and give it to the city court. They process it. Okay? At the current state, the law says that for people who are held in contempt of court and they're put in place on a probationary status, we're allowed to charge a fee. So we're charging a thirty dollar fee for our services right now. It's costing the city nothing. Okay? These are fees that we're assessing, but we're only collecting thirty percent of them. So what this is doing, that, that's a reflection of the caseload. The caseload, so every, the higher the caseload, the higher we assess, but the less we collect. It's okay. It's just a number. It's just something for an educational thing. But what it, what it shows you guys is, say you were able to pay for the indigent offenders, or say you were able to pay for the program a hundred percent, you would have gotten that other twenty-eight thousand in your coffers that would have been to you. So you would have been almost eighty thousand in six months, when we're just starting. I mean, we're just barely starting. But what we incurred to do that for the city is we incurred what our P and L said. We incurred a loss of almost sixty thousand dollars. But that's okay. It's part of business. It's part of why I did, I volunteered to do this in the first place. I know, we've been, we've been doing this for years. I know that in time with the support that I've gotten from this body and the judge and the police chief and everybody involved in judicial system, this is going to change. But I need time.
Well, I think, I've heard nothing but good things about you and I've seen you go above and beyond. So I would support, I would definitely support the adding that on to the agreement.
We're talking about the adding on the old court fines? Is that what it is?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and I, and I, and I gave you a standard form that we do in multiple cities throughout the state.
Okay.
So.
So I'm going to need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the collection services agreement attached to the materials subject to, with the Court Programs Incorporated, subject to further negotiation by the city attorney.
Okay. Do I have a second? I'm going to need a second or it's going to drop. All right. So is there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you. Mr. Quarter, you have.
Yes, sir. Mayor, counsel.
Seventy-one seconds. Go.
So last council meeting, y'all had a lengthy discussion about the proposed amendments to the dog ordinance regarding parks, beaches, and other public recreational areas. You asked to have the open areas restored, off-leash at IG Levy North, as well as the River Park area with the dog park, as well as the section between Pascoola Street and Hague Street on the beach for off-leash. And the immediate control was defined in the proposed amendment that's been revised that says immediate control as used herein means the dog shall be within ear, eye shot of its owner and under a voice command while off-leash. All of that based on what the last council had said, complies with what y'all's wishes were. So with that, I would recommend that you approve the proposed ordinance.
Is that allowing dogs at the Point on leash?
Yes.
I know it does.
On leash, walking down the beaches. That's correct. That's correct.
Do I need a motion? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, counsel. I'm John Batley. I have a dog, two dogs that like to play on the beach. So I also am with a group of people who train their dogs at IG Levy and off-leash. Obviously to train them to retrieve something a hundred yards away, you can't walk them on a leash. So anyway, I think a lot of this dog ordinance proposal is good. I question a couple of things on the Pascoola Street to Hague Street. One, if we amended that to go all the way to the Point, people would have a place to park. There's no place to park within reason of Pascoola Street to Hague Street without parking on somebody's property. So I'm thinking that if we could see an amendment to go all the way to the Point where parking is available, but not including the Point Park, that would be a little easier for people to comply.
Mr. Batley, if I could, so the ordinance now would allow, Dr. Batley, I'm sorry, on the, at Point Park and on the Point itself where you do park, you would be on, on leash at that point. And then when you got to the Hague Street, Pascoola Street area, you could be off-leash at that, at that juncture. The only reason why you would not want to necessarily off-leash around Point Park would be the concerns for feces or whatever on the Point Park area with new amphitheater and those kind of things. But this does allow you to have on leash from the parking at Point Park throughout Point Park, throughout the amphitheater on leash, and then free off-leash from Hague Street to Pascoola Street.
I can live with that, but still would make, to go all the way to the pavilion instead of stopping it at Hague Street.
Well, the pavilion only has two handicap parking places, right?
That's correct.
Well, you'd still point Park at the current park. And you would have to be on leash to the approved area.
Well, the, the only reason not to do that is we have movie nights down there and people will come down there while little kids are sitting there trying to watch a movie and let their dogs loose. And now.
No, that, that, that's not the area I'm talking about.
Well, which.
I'm talking about the beach area. It's a, it's a fairly small area between Hague and the pavilion.
So you're saying from the, basically from the shade structure, not to include the shade structure, but from the shade structure over back to.
I think that's a buffer that we talked about.
How are you going to enforce that? I mean, Hague Street's a pretty well-defined line of demarcation. If we start getting into not around the pavilion, but on the beach, I, I think it was just, the, the reason that Hague Street was, was put in here was to make it easy for everybody, including the officers who have to enforce this, to know what's allowed versus what's not allowed.
Well, one of my recommendations that I haven't gotten to yet is to put up signs.
Well, that's going to happen. How do, how do we fit in a one foot by one and a half foot sign, what areas of Point Park that the dog can be off the leash versus those areas of Point Park that they have to be on the leash?
Dogs cannot be beyond this point without being on a leash. That's what the sign.
Well, again, if it's part of the parking, then what area are we going to put, and I'm not trying to argue, Doc, I'm just saying that if certain areas of the parking lot, the dog can be off the leash versus certain areas of the parking lot that are closer to the.
No, not including the parking lot. You'd have to be on leash until you got to the area. But I'm just saying, when the beach starts, the dog should be able to run. But if that, that's a minor point.
Let's go to the next one.
Okay. The next point is why, what is the difference between Oliver Street and Pascoola and Pascoola and Hague? Why is one area okay to run dogs and the other areas not? What's the difference?
You think that they should go from Oliver all the way to the Point?
Yeah.
I think that's because we had a number of people that said they didn't want dogs off the leash. And there's some people that want dogs on the leash and like, you know, like sausages and, and, you know, there's compromises everywhere when it comes to making policy. So I think it was just a compromise, Doc.
Well, would you consider enlarging that area?
Well, we did consider it, and I think that this is what everybody has kind of come up with to try to make, at least find a middle ground between those who don't want any dogs loose on the beach versus people like you that want dogs loose everywhere on the beach.
So I, I just, I just want to say, just because I don't know if you know, but we had this discussion last council meeting. And then we come up with an agreement and tonight we're supposed to pass the agreement. When I asked, raise your hand if you want to speak or sign up to speak, I guess you weren't here. So.
There was no public notice, as far as I know, that this was going to be discussed.
Well, we passed the ordinance, I mean, we put out the agenda. But anyway, let's go down your list real quick and see.
Well, I would like to see a larger area than what you allowed. But that's something that you have to determine yourselves. The signs.
How far would you like it to go?
Huh?
How far would you like it to go?
Oliver to.
Well.
That's the whole beach.
To Hague.
Well, okay, if you could, if you would compromise.
That's not the.
That's the whole east side of, I mean, west side of the beach.
Yeah, the whole west side.
If you could compromise from there, where would you compromise? Market Street?
Any, any addition would be appreciated.
Okay.
Well, didn't we add?
No.
We didn't add? We just left it like it was?
It was Oliver Street to the Point.
Okay.
And that, and that's better than what they had originally.
Okay. Next one?
Okay. The signs I mentioned, designating free running areas and your dog has to be on a leash beyond this point.
No, we did talk about.
Working on that, yes.
Yes, okay.
And the last thing was to provide a station with doggy bags.
Yes.
As you already discussed that.
Working on that, yes.
Well, that's basically what I wanted, except for I would like a little more room.
And let's see, do we talk about the water dishes too? Wasn't that something? No, because there are, there are already some out there, right?
A dog water?
Yeah.
Yes, there's one near Pascoola.
Doc, if parking is an issue, and I, and I understand that, and I, I get that, but if parking is an issue, and you extended, let's say, this all the way to Eleventh Street, where are people going to park who want to let their dogs run loose between Eleventh Street and Market Street? They're going to park back down at the Point?
Yeah.
They're going to walk?
Well, it's, it's the same conundrum that you have with it as it is now.
Well, that's a, that's a parking conundrum, not necessarily a where the dogs can run conundrum. I guess what I'm saying is you could make it as far as you want to on the beach, but how are people going to access those portions of the beach that are a mile away from Point Park if, if there's not adequate parking?
Quite a few people live in that area.
I, the last time I looked between Eleventh Street and Market Street, Beach Boulevard was completely devoid of houses except for one.
Well, a few blocks off.
Okay. I, but again, it's, you know, you understand my, the issue is, I mean, where, where are we going to have people park who want their dogs to run around Eleventh Street?
I understand that.
I'm not opposed to Market Street. Eleventh Street's a block away from Oliver.
I think Market Street would be good.
And you see people coming up Market Street all the time with their dogs.
I'll leave y'all to discuss.
No, you won't. You're going to stand right there.
Well, you know.
I'm not opposed to Market Street. Is anybody else?
Is anybody else opposed to it or not opposed to it?
Is anybody else opposed to extending the area to Market Street?
I am.
I'm not.
Scott?
I'm not.
Mayor? Brad? Mayor, Scott?
Hold on, we'll get a count. Just a minute. I'm, I'm just. Hold on, we'll get a count. Just a minute. I'm just pondering this.
For the people now.
For the people? Did you say for the people?
For the people, yeah.
At what point does it stop, though?
For the dogs, not the people.
Well, it stops wherever you decide, I think.
That's right.
Well said.
Mark, you're talking about Market all the way to Hague?
All the way. Boy.
Well, that's a long...
Well, you don't have to walk. You get a dog, duh.
I don't guess I would be opposed to it. What's your thoughts?
I said no.
Oh, I didn't hear you?
Yeah.
There's four of us. Rev?
Rev?
I don't know what I'd have to say, because he said something about Oliver Street runs north and south, is that correct?
Yes.
Out to Market, then if you go north and south, then you want to go back down to Washington or Beach Boulevard?
No, just on the beach.
Just on the beach?
Just on the beach. Just on the beach.
We're just talking about from that street down the beach.
Nobody has any objections. I'll make a motion, I make a motion that we approve the dog ordinance as proposed, adding Market Street to Hague as the dog off-leash area.
I'll second. All right, and so here's the way I want to say this, though. In the discussions, anybody got any discussion? All right, I do. So, I'm going to continue. This should, this should compromise everybody. So, if we go back and redraft this ordinance again, then I want everybody here to be sure this is it. This is where everybody's happy with.
We're just changing one word.
You're just changing one word, and it actually would take a thinking three days.
I understand that. So, we got a motion and no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Steven, do you have a dog?
Yes.
Well, I don't want to see it on the beach.
I'm not...
We're going to write you a ticket if I see your dog on the beach.
No, my point is Pasca Gula versus Market, that's all.
Yeah. All right, so, thank you, Dr. Batley. I appreciate you. So, Mr. Scruggs again. He rocks. Good job, Doc.
The first item under the 10 is the residential incentive program continuation. I kind of wanted to have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about this. I know some of you are aware of this program. Some of you may not be. But, and I know that some of the citizens may not be aware of it either. The program was started back in 15. And basically, what it does, for people who are building new homes on vacant lots, the city has an application process where they can go through and have fees associated with building and tap fees and water fees exempted if the house being constructed has a value of $150,000 or more. The council that adopted this had a one-year sunset for each year. It starts on January 1 and ends on December 31. I had not been in charge of this program as far as the management of it, other than exempting the fees that came to my office. But it did expire on December 31. And we have had a couple of applicants who are wanting to construct new homes and have asked about this being extended. I wanted to bring it to your attention, see if you are in the, if you would like to have it extended. I can, we can either do that tonight, or I can provide a resolution, an ordinance that would... But it's only changing one, it's only one of the change in one number.
I've got a lot of feedback about that, so I would be very supportive to continue this.
Someone to utilize this incentive, definitely.
Yeah, we've got, since in the past three years, we've had over 20 houses that have been constructed and are using this program. There's a few that were not $150,000 or more and did not benefit from it. But, you know, I've recently looked at the housing starts across the Jackson County. And of course, the Jackson County is really doing well. But the other municipalities are about where we are. So, we are really, we're doing okay. We've just got a lot more, a lot further to go to catch up. But hopefully, this program will continue to encourage that.
Donovan, one of the discussions we had today was how long. And you said one or two years, and even suggested that it might be permanent. I'm a little loathe to make it permanent. Just don't want to buy in the hands, I guess, of a subsequent council for what is essentially, I hate to call it a subsidy, but it's, you can call it a, you know, basically a waiving of a fee, whatever it is. But my recommendation is that we approve a continuation of the residential incentive program through the end of our term, which would be June 30, 2021.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All right, do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor signify. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good job.
Another one of the new hats I've been wearing is dealing with the CBD tax exemption program. As you know, this has been ongoing since the original resolution was adopted back in '11. And we've expanded the CBD several times. And currently, the CBD actually includes basically every property that is commercially zoned within the city. So, Market Street, downtown, Chico, Highway 90, some portions of North Market and Pasca Gula Street. There are a large number of buildings that do benefit from this. And basically, what it does, it allows you to exempt up to seven years and usually about 80% of taxes for new improvements that you are doing on a building. So, it does not exempt you from what you're already paying. But if you decide to do an expansion of a building, it does provide you the opportunity to get some abatement of those municipal taxes. The, earlier tonight, we actually rescinded one of these exemptions that were previously granted due to a business not operating anymore. And I think at your previous, your last meeting, you did the same for two other businesses. There really is some lack of clarity in the ordinance that addresses what to do with a business that ceases to operate or ceases to go by the guidelines or the promises that were made when the exemption was granted. So, with the new policy, well, not the new, the revised policy that you had before you basically goes through and identifies more specifically what we can do to address these situations, whether it be lack of paying water bills or utilities, code violations, or other things that are, I think it's, Mr. Burrow pointed out to me, was not being a good neighbor or a good citizen. So, it does give us the opportunity to kind of use that as a way to pull somebody back into being good neighbors. Also, the process for evaluating applications was a point system, given points for job consideration, points for size of building or investment, points for aesthetics and landscaping. But historically, that process of tabulating really was not something that was followed. The city council needs more or less more discretion over the way this is granted. And we've modified the regulations to where that discretion is provided. Meaning, you come in, and if you are doing something that this body likes, then it gives you the opportunity to provide that exemption. And hopefully, it will be for, you know, big businesses and big projects and big exemptions. But it does provide you more discretion as to what the rules are being modified for. That's the, in a nutshell, but I do have, you've got the copy of the revised policy that is before you. And if you would vote on it, we can start administering it. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, or try to.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the revised CBD tax exemption policy and ordinance with a revision date of March 2019.
Any further discussion?
I just, so the only thing we're modifying is Section 7, cessation of exemption.
Seven was modified. There was some language modification, no real...
Nothing substantial.
Meaning, nothing substantial. And then on the application where we outlined the points for consideration, there was the thing that we're giving 10 points for landscaping, 10 points for investment, 10 points, 20 points for job creation, I believe. And we put that down basically to say that it's giving you more discretion to actually do that yourself.
All right, if there is no more discussion, we have a motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any needs, right? Next is Ms. Crossfire.
Okay, we're going to look over these, your revenue and expenditure reports. I know you've been getting these every month since you've taken office. I think the best way to do this is to kind of go through the highlights of the revenue expenditures. And then if we have any questions, if you have any questions, we will come back to those. So, if we look at the general fund on page one, you can see overall, we're at 68.5% on our revenues, which is not bad. There are a few items that are running low. Most of those items are items that just do not come in at a regular monthly basis. Things that are, for example, intergovernmental revenue, we have quite a bit of that that comes in in September, our homestead reimbursements. So, it looks a little bit skewed on a monthly report. But as the year progresses, you'll see those revenues start to come in. So, revenues are looking okay. We're going to continue to monitor. Frank and I were already looking at the ad lorum taxes month-to-month and kind of monitor that. We'll know more about where we are on target after another month. We will have the largest percentage of our ad lorum taxes collected by then. So, if you want to flip over to the expenditures on page nine, I believe, is where we'll have the end of the general fund. And that way, we can kind of look at the general fund overall. You'll see economic development. The line item, four items down there says total general fund. That's okay. Page nine?
You may proceed.
All right. Page nine, just below 404, economic development, you'll see total general fund. If you follow that line all the way across, you'll see that we've expended 12, almost 12.2 million, which is 40% of the budget for the general fund. So, we're still seeing some savings. We should be, well, I say should be, the budget for this point in time will be about 43% of the budget if you look at a monthly basis. So, if we continue to tighten up like we have been, then we should see some savings on the expenditure side by the end of the year for the general fund, which of course is a good thing. Yes. Thought you might be interested in looking at the hurricane fund on page two on the revenue side. That is about three-quarters of the way down. Fund 091 on page two. Just because you can see on the grant side, it shows that our revenue is at 2.7%. I just want to point out, that's on a reimbursement basis. So, we're not going to get anything back from them until we spend it, and then we ask for reimbursement. We've only spent, I think, if you look on a page... 10, at the very bottom of page 10, it'll show your expenditures. We've only expended 17.6, 17,600, so... We're doing pretty well there, too. On our revenues for the utility fund, the bottom of page three. Of course, the first line, the intergovernmental revenue, that's the administrative reimbursement that goes from the 480 fund, solid waste, to the Pascal utility fund. We have not done any of those administrative reimbursements to either fund, 400, or the general fund. So, of course, those are looking kind of grim at the moment.
Talking about the utility fund, I was going to ask you just a broad question. But am I accurate that so far for the fiscal year in the utilities, looking at the top of page four, we have received year-to-date revenues of 9.4, almost 9.4 million?
Yes.
And as I'm looking at it on page 13 at the bottom, under year-to-date expended for Pascal utilities, it's 3.6 million?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, in layman's terms, we're 6 million to the good at least so far about halfway through the fiscal year.
Absolutely. And if you go back through some of these divisions in the utility fund, you'll see... Capital Outlay and the Water Department, Division 672 on page 13.
Okay.
You know, we budgeted 760,000, and we have not spent any of that. So, there's some large items that we have not been expending long.
And to be fair, that 6 million, half of that is the $3 million proceeds from Center Point for the sale of the system.
Absolutely.
So, I guess if we're looking at operational profit, we're more like about 3 million.
Right. And of course, that wasn't budgeted. We did not know going into the budget that we were going to receive it.
Understand, yes.
We have several budget amendments that will be forthcoming over the next few months that will take some of these changes into account that we've run across during the year.
Is there any reason, and again, I don't mean to harp on the utilities, is there any reason, if we, let's exclude the $3 million in proceeds, that we should not stay in the black for the rest of the year when it comes to the utilities? I know there was some concern about liquidity and so forth if we took out the revenues from the sale of gas. What are your projections between now and the end of the fiscal year?
I will know more in April when we do those budget amendments and we get into the nitty-gritty on that. I don't have any concerns right now. But we, it's possible that we may have to do a budget amendment specifically for, well, we will have to do a budget amendment specifically for the reduction in gas revenues for the rest of the year.
Right.
Of course, we all knew that the income from the sale would offset...
Right.
More than offset that.
Okay.
I want to point out on page three as well, the GEO debt service, that's Fund 200. That's that large increase that we had to do in ad lorum taxes there. We're hitting right at 70% on taxes collected. This 2.426 that we've actually received to date is about a million and a half higher than last year. And of course, that was the funds that we needed to bring in to pay off the shortfall note, which was just done this past week.
Also includes the debt service from the recreation fund?
Yes, it does. A lot of, we have a lot of debt service that we pay out in March, in the beginning of April. So, later in the year, we'll have smaller amounts to pay out. But most of it gets front-loaded, which is kind of a good thing because you get your tax revenues in, you pay that off, and then it kind of holds steady the rest of the year. Solid Waste Management Fund, smaller fund, as you can see on the revenue side on page four, we're right at 41%. So, we're on target there. And I believe the expenditures on that are even... Yeah. On page 14, the expenditures on that are running right at 37%. So, overall, things are looking good. We're... We're, we've been really tight on the budget this year. Everybody's been very cooperative in trying to hold line on spending. Were there any specific questions that y'all had? Or anything maybe for next month that you might like to see? Want to present these again? No?
Anybody got anything?
No, I think it's helpful to look all of this with you to get ready for the budget.
Oh, yes.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I need to step out for the claims docket.
All right, hold on, Steven. Because we have to approve for year-to-date. So I need a motion, a second, on approving this budget report for year-to-date at this point.
Make a motion, we approve the year-to-date budget report.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so is there a motion to approve the claim, the claims docket? Is there any motion to approve the claims docket?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, Mayor, Council, all of them. 13B1.
I just want to understand what is included in Phase 2. You can, once you do it.
Okay, so this is, great, this is Phase 2 of the Hospital Road project. When we first programmed the entire project, it was supposed to go from Old Mobile Highway to Highway 90. Due to permits associated with the railroad, the entire project couldn't proceed as quickly as needed. And there were some federal and state funds involved in the project that had to be spent quickly. So we broke the project into two. We did the bridge and the roundabout in the first project so that any closures could be handled all in the same first phase. That project ended at Tupelo. This project will carry from where we ended moving north to Highway 90, including the railroad crossing. And due to the budget issues, we did remove utility crossings under Highway 90 from this particular project. But we will be doing underground utilities in the same area, which is some of what Cheryl was discussing about, like the utility fund that hasn't been spent yet. Those are funds that are budgeted for capital improvements and haven't been spent. So that's what this project will include.
I have a question I want to ask you.
Yes, sir.
Testing, testing, one, one, two, am I on? Tupelo Street. Every street on, some of the neighbors have been asking me since I just happen to live on that street. Tupelo Avenue, is that street a part of this construction?
No. It goes to the outside of Hospital Road.
Every street on Hospital Road has been repaid, except Tupelo. Can you give me a reason why not?
There's a lot of concrete in Tupelo. It's not just a straight mill and overlay.
All of it was concrete, all over the streets, whatever was concrete.
Okay, I don't know about the other ones.
They still got repaid.
I think that was before my time. I don't know why they got chosen and not Tupelo. I know Tupelo's on the list that needs repair.
Yeah. Really, really bad. We got water pumping up out of the streets. The streets is cracked.
Yes, sir.
It flowed, well, not floods. But when it rained, you can see water just popping up out of the ground.
And it's getting more and more evident this year, citywide. Anywhere there's concrete with cracks in the street, we're seeing that happening and getting much worse. The ground is just saturated.
But you got it on the list.
It's on the list when the money's available. Like you, like you just discussed, we are all doing everything we can to tighten our belts. And that does include, some of these repairs just are not fundable right now.
Jackie, a question. I know one time before, we looked at the quiet zone with the railroad track coming through. And that was one of the intersections that had a problem with the entry into the hotel from right there. Is that being addressed here or is that just going to be staying?
The easement, one of the easements that was acquired allows us to combine the hotel access through the parking lot that also goes into that shopping center that Pizza Hut and the laundry is in. So those driveways will be connected and there won't be the separate one.
So that'll eliminate that issue.
Anything else? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I make, I move that we authorize the advertisement for bids regarding the Hospital Road Phase 2 construction project.
Second.
All right, we have any more to discuss? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, do we have anyone else to address the council? All right, so thank you guys for attending tonight. We're going to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So move, Mr. Mayor.